Will Burr, please take your seat. He's holding down the glass to keep the hell out of you. Thank you, everyone. We are now shifting to the city council candidates. Before I start, two things or maybe three. We have some folks in the audience who didn't get recognized. Scott Whitney, Assistant City Manager and now Chief of Police. Thank you, Martin from Oxnard School District. Board of Trustees, Deborah Cordez. Now to the substance and the process. First on process, I've been asked by the audience to make sure that as you're answering questions, and we've got three mics, speak clearly. Make sure you've got a mic and you're speaking into the mic because these things will pick you up only if you're speaking right into it. So we'll make sure we take care of that. Let me run through the instructions one more time. You've got to drill here. It's one minute each. It goes quickly. Nancy back there, who is extremely punctual and well timed, will give you the yellow flag paper at 45 seconds. You have 15 seconds left. Red, you're done, and I will sort of talk over you at the thank you at that point. We're going to start with an opening statement from each of you. Then we will have five questions that you'll each have one minute on, and then we will do a closing statement. And if I get occasionally a pause to figure out where I'm at in the lineup here, bear with me and we'll take care of that. So let's get started and we get moving. I'm going to start alphabetically with Mr. Albanese. One minute, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is David Albanese. I want to be the next city council member for the city of Oxnard. I am a longtime resident of the city, business owner, entrepreneur, and I have opened and operated several businesses in the city and are supported by tons and tons of local small businesses that you guys are actually a big cause of why they're here today. So that's why I thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Daniel Chavez. Born and raised in the city of Oxnard. I'm running for city council because I believe that I can work with our organizations and our communities, our residents, our employees, to try to rebuild and maintain trust, unity, and mutual respect. You know, I live in South Oxnard, which is an area that needs development, and we need your guys' support. We need to bring your businesses into South Oxnard to support our residents, and to do that is to build a better relationship with all businesses, current and new businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier.
Good morning, and thank you for inviting us. My name is Orlando Dozier. I'm a program analyst. I work at Port Monique. I'm also a planning commissioner. I'm running for city council for Oxnard because I believe that I basically want to help my community, and that's something that was instilled in me in 20 years in the military. And if you want to hear a little bit more about that, I'd be happy to elaborate on it. I just wanted to say that a great city, I think, is built on three pillars. Those pillars are the residents, the city hall, and the business community. So I'm looking forward to speaking to one of the three important pillars today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber.
Common sense is not common in Oxnard, and I'm running because I have the experience, skills, and abilities to return rational, professional thought to city hall. I served honorably in the Navy for 20 years as a captain. I was commander of a destroyer and commander of the Naval Surface Warfare Center where I had 2,000 people and a $600 million budget. I'm a small business owner who helps good companies get better. I'm on the planning commission as the chair. I'm in my neighborhood watch as a member, and I'm on a number of community boards that is bringing good relationships and helping Oxnard. There's three things that I'm running for or running on. My platforms are leadership. We need to make sure that we have a vision, purpose, and motivation for the city to thrive. Financial responsibility. We need to have a leader who has the big picture and understands the relationship between budgets, people, infrastructure, and programs. And finally, trust. We need to return transparency to the diocese.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, and good morning. I've been honored to be your council member for eight years now, and I'm asking for another term. I like to think that I do bring common sense to the diocese. And so I'm looking to continue on with that. I have three elements of my campaign: public safety, economic gardening, which is a strategy for economic development, and trust in city hall. When I say trust in city hall, that you know as taxpayers, rate payers, or whatever, that we're using your money wisely, judiciously, and we're not being frivolous. And I think that we really need to focus on getting our house in order before we go back to anyone and ask for an increase in our pay. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. Petrus.
Yes, hello. My name is Enrique Petrus. I am running for the Oxford City Council because I truly believe that the city council and the mayor either do not have a clear vision of where they want to move the city or else they really do not know what they are doing. The mayor and the city council, they keep bringing up the idea that everything is good, that we're doing this, we're doing the recruitment, we're doing that. The thing is, that is not true. We still have a lot of potholes in the city. We still have a lot of dirtiness in the city, a lot of trash. We still have graffiti, and I can go on and on with a lot of things that are not, the city's not doing good. Okay? The reason I'm running is for two main reasons. One, to speed the economic growth of the city in order to create more high-paying jobs for our citizens, and two, decrease the crime rate.
Thank you. Mr. Starr.
My name is Aaron Starr. I'm a lifelong resident of Ventura County. I really believe that we have a lot of potential in the city. I really believe we have a lot of potential in the city, and unfortunately, we're not taking advantage of it. And probably the best indicator of that is a chart that you'll find. Every table is a couple of charts there. It shows the unemployment rate for our city versus the other large cities in this county. And what you'll find today is that we have a 6.3% unemployment rate in Oxnard, and the best city, Park Park, has a 4.5. It's an extra 1.8 percentage points. This is the canary in the coal mine. This is what shows you what is wrong here. I want to focus on the basics. I want to focus on law enforcement, infrastructure, and creating a business-friendly environment. I'm the type of guy who gets things done. You seem to get initiative on the ballot. I can take that sort of enthusiasm and work ethic to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villa.
Let's get that microphone. There you go. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Jack Villa. I'm running for city council. I've been born and raised in Oxnard. I'm third generation, son of Oxnard. My family here has been here since 1916, and I'm running because I'd like to see a positive change of engagement with the neighborhoods, the business. Right now, I'm the vice chair to the INCO. I work with the neighborhoods, trying to get them involved, and the main thing I believe the city needs to do is to get the residents and the business involved and engagement and speaking to each other. And I think I can bring that about, and I presently am doing that with the neighborhoods, bringing neighborhoods into the fold of the city. And I think I can be a positive change. Thanks.
Thank you. That's our opening statement. We're going to have a series of five questions. I'm going to start with the first one at the end with Mr. Albanese, and then the second one, we'll start with Mr. Chavez and on down the line. So the first question, starting with Mr. Albanese, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address if elected? How would you address it? The most urgent issue.
I think there's several urgent issues, but in my opinion, the most urgent issue is to really deal with the crime and set up systems and work with our new police chief in order to set things up, in order to decrease that, to be able to make the citizens of the city feel more secure, increase the profitability of our local businesses, and really drive new businesses to really come to the city. With the experience that I bring to the table, dealing with so many local businesses myself and outside, I really feel that I know what local businesses need, want, and how they can really drive revenue in order to also help the city drive more revenue and really make it a productive situation where we're not spending money, we're actually making money at the end of the day in order to pay for more of these things that we need. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
Well, like Mr. Albanese, I believe that there is multiple issues that our city has to deal with. I believe the most urgent one, because there's about five of them that I can think off the top of my head, but the most urgent one that I believe that we need to tackle right away is our fiscal house. We need to get our fiscal house under control so that we know where we stand as a city. And to do that is to try to recruit and try to retain our finance department. You know, we've lost our CFO. He resigned. Our finance department is not in the best shape. So our goal should be try to reach out, retain employees, have competitive wages so that we keep our finance department, so that we know where we stand financially. I believe once we stand, know where we stand financially, we'll be able to work on the other issues that we have, but I believe the main one is our fiscal house.
Thank you. Got a microphone there? Mr. Dozier, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
Thank you for the question. Like most of you in here, we've probably all heard of the Mysl Pyramid. So safety is always going to be on everyone's mind as being the most important thing. I think we addressed that right up front when we hired a very good police chief, someone that came from the local community, that our local community believes. What I would like to see, though, as a city council member, is the main thing I want to focus on are the material, the over 100 material weaknesses that were identified. Now that we have them identified, the next step is developing a get well plan. We need to set a plan and put it against a timeline so we can address these material weaknesses. And we should also set a schedule and say, one year from now, and see how well we're doing. So if elected, those are the things that I'll be focusing on. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down the line, Mr. Huber, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
Too many issues, too little time. But my number one issue is the budget. We need to get our financial house in order first so that we can have a vibrant, safe city and do extremely well in the region and be the best city in the region. We need to make sure that we hire a good key financial officer. It is a vacant position. We need to make sure we hire the staff that can make sure they maintain the books. We need to hire, or actually, we need to buy software that is modern. We still have old software for our current financial system. We need to zero base our budget. Our department heads need to have, start with a fresh slate, and build their budget up from requirements so that they understand what their budget is. We also need to reduce the number of consultants that we have so we have a fair balance between the number of employees and the number of consultants. It should be something like 30 or 20% of the consultants and 80% of the residents or the employees that are working the budget. And the final thing is we need an independent auditor controller that can make sure that we maintain our ethical standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
I think the first thing we need to look at is really our public safety position. Our police department is understaffed. Crime has gone through the roof in the last four or five years. We are now above median average nationwide in terms of crime rate. We need to have a city that is safe, clean, prosperous, and effective, and people will want to come here, that want to live here, that want to start their businesses here. And if we create that environment, that helps us on the financial side. City of Ventura, 108,000 people, has six fully-staffed fire stations. City of Oxnard, 210,000 people, has eight fire stations, most of which are fully-staffed, but periodically, there's a downgrade in staffing. I think that we are not positioned to be self-sufficient in case of a huge disaster or an emergency or anything else, that we need that. That creates the clean, prosperous environment that's going to bring businesses here, and those businesses are going to help increase our tax base, our property tax base, and get us on financial sound footing.
Thank you. Mr. Petrus. Got a mic? There we go. What is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
I feel like there are two main, two main issues facing the city right now. Number one is the economic role in order to create hundreds of good-paying jobs. I believe that the council should submit to the city manager for execution, a plan that will create hundreds of jobs. If the city manager doesn't execute the will of the people, we should just terminate that manager and get another one. I will be very, very, believe me, I will fire the city manager if I don't see no improvement in the economic growth. The second one is the crime rate. The crime rate, we keep giving the police department and safety millions of dollars every year, and they don't do nothing. The crime is still going up. What I will, I will put the police chief unnoticed, that if either you, you either reduce our crime rate, or we're going to fire you, or we're going to take away one third of your budget. You either produce, I want results. If no results, you're out.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you address it?
Think about your business. If you had more revenues and better control of your costs, you'd be better off. City needs to focus on generating more revenues by making it easier for businesses to come here. Right now, it's very difficult with our permitting process. People end up waiting months for tenant improvement to be approved. That's just ridiculous. So I think it's all about bringing permit simplicity into Oxnard. We have the model for it right now in Phoenix. They have managed to improve the permit process so that literally somebody can come in and get a permit the day they apply for it, and then for building improvements, tenant improvements, buildings. We also have the highest city business license in the county. I want to work to reduce that to the lowest, and I'll put initiative on the ballot to do so. That's what it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, what is the most urgent issue the Oxnard City Council must address, and if elected, how would you?
I believe the fiscal responsibility is probably the number one to be addressed. I believe it needs to strengthen its reserves to afford better policing in the city. When I speak to neighborhoods across the city, the one concern residents have is their safety. They want to feel safe when they're home. They want to feel safe when they leave to work and when they come back from work that their home is not broken into. They want to feel safe when they walk their dog down the street or when their kids play in the park. They want to feel safe when they walk their children to school. But fiscal responsibility and healthy reserves to afford that is the most important, and also, I believe, there should be a, the council brought up the whistleblowers issue, and I think that that should be addressed too.
So that was our first question. Thank you very much. We're going to start back on the other end with Mr. Chavez. Get the mic over there. Thank you, everyone. So what are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
You know, I believe that our first, you know, step in order to try to deal with the development is creating better relationships. Like a few of the candidates up here have stated, that the process for businesses to get licensing or permit is not the best. It's in a horrible shape that we are expecting businesses to pay two to three times more than the average in the county. So for development, you know, development brings jobs. It brings jobs for construction. It brings permanent jobs that are year-round. It allows residents, it tackles our housing issue where we need housing for our residents. We're overcrowding our certain areas, and I think a new development on the Channel Islands Harbor will be vibrant. It'll support our city, it'll bring in more revenue, and you know, I don't really see too much of a downfall with trying to develop an area like that.
Mr. Dozier, what are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
I'm happy that the city finally got the Channel Islands back from the county, and I think that one of the things we need to do, though, is make sure that the county picks up their share of the cost for its maritime fees. Right now, we have communities within Oxnard that are picking up that whole cost for the whole county, and I don't think that's fair. What I would like to see is our peers, our harbors, to become a traffic destination. I would like to see tourism driven there, less support the businesses that are there, and try to attract new businesses to come there. Also, I'd like to see Oxnard have its own pier. We seem to be the only city that doesn't have a pier, and I think that that would also attract a lot of business. So those are the things I'd like to see.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, what are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
The Channel Islands Harbor is an absolute gem that needs to be polished and made better. An opportunity to have dual-use resident and commercial development is a wonderful idea. When I was at the base, I was able to establish a number of relationships with the developers that are in the area so that we could come up with the right balance of what the residents need, what the businesses need, and what the city needs. As a planning commissioner, I'm also learning those things and how to build those relationships and some innovative ideas with how to have a win-win-win situation for residents, businesses, and the city. Of course, this is, the Channel Islands Harbor is in the county, but the land and the roads as people go to that are in the city. So we're going to have an impact with our traffic, and we're going to need to make sure that we have a good conversation with the developers so that we get a benefit in the city from that development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, what are your views, please, on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
Oh, we absolutely need it. Channel Islands Harbor is old, it's tired, it's worn out. It needs to be improved. It is in the city. It's owned by the county of Ventura, but the city now, because of a coastal commission decision, has the opportunity to be involved in that process where prior to that, it was simply the county decision. I think we need to bring a plan forward where we can build collaboration among the residents that are down there. You hear a lot of concerns from the people that live there. We need them to be part of the solution as opposed to not being happy with what we're proposing or what the county is proposing. We really need strong collaborative support to improve that area in terms of housing, businesses. Again, a strong business community makes a strong local community in terms of bringing revenue to our city and helping us move to the future.
Thank you. Mr. Petrus, what are your views on the need for residential and commercial development at Channel Islands?
I am 100% for it. I have always said that I believe in economic growth. A city cannot be static and stay in one place. Even if we don't want growth, it's going to be inevitable. We've got a plan for it. I am 100% in support of commercial activities in that area to create more jobs, more income for the city, to generate all those things that we can do some for support of services of the city. I go a step further, that I would like to create partnerships, private and government partnerships, to entice businesses to come to the city, and I am all for that. And if I get elected, I'm going to, I'm going to work very hard to create a lot of good-paying jobs in the city of Oxnard. Probably about 100 good-paying jobs every year in my four years that I'm elected, and I have a plan for it, and I will talk about that plan later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, your views, Channel Islands Harbor?
This is really a symptom of government ownership and management of anything. It's a really poor situation for the last 50 years. As long as the county owns this property, it's going to be mismanaged. In my view, what needs to happen is do as much as we can to get the private sphere to be able to own and control Channel Islands Harbor. One possible way to do that is that we can solicit bids out there for a developer to come in and develop the harbor, and if necessary, this is very controversial for me to say this, but if necessary, the city could use eminent domain to take the property from the county, and then at the same time, execute a greater with the developer to finance that and to go out and actually develop this property to what it needs to be. This is a gem with great potential. As long as the government controls it, it will never be what you're thinking of.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, your views, please, on residential and commercial development at Channel Islands Harbor?
Yes, I'm all for the development of the harbor. At one time, we had Casa Serena and lobster trap, and that area was a vibrant area 30 years ago. I've lived here all my life, and that used to be the place to go for dining and entertainment, hotel. That was the place. And I think it can come back, and I believe it'd be an asset for tourism and the development of the city as a whole, and bringing revenue, hotel tax, and so on. So I'm all for the development of the harbor.
Thank you. And we haven't forgotten about you, Mr. Albanese. What are your views?
So I know we all love the new collection, especially the new comedy club, right? Imagine that at the Channel Islands Harbor. How much better would it have not been if it was to have been put there? That's what would have driven tourism. That's what would have driven more businesses to the city. In my opinion, what needs to happen right now is no eminent domain needs to happen. I think leaders, strong leaders, need to bring one vision together, unite the homeowners, unite the county and the city in order to execute a plan, and we do need to work with developers. We do need to work with within ourselves and see exactly what we can do to bring a vision and have everybody share the exact same vision in order to execute that.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our third question. Mr. Dozier, we're going to start with you on this one, skipping over there. Sorry about that. Mr. Dozier, how can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate, particularly homicides within the Oxnard community?
I think the city has took the first step and filled in the most important position in the police department with chief. I think that's a good step. A model that I like to point out to the city is the model that was used at River Park. I'm a River Park resident. And what makes River Park unique is that the community, through the development, paid for two police staffs, two police officers, and a substation to reside in the community. I think that that has greatly reduced crime in our community because we have presence that's frequently, police presence that's frequent and often seen. The police are well-known throughout the community. Residents feel comfortable identifying any issues. I think that model should be used going forward to any new developments in the city, and that'll definitely help reduce the crime.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, how can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate, particularly on homicide?
Great question. Thank you. What we need to do today to lessen crime is make sure that the police department has the people and equipment that they need. What we need to do in the future is have some transformation and innovative ideas. What I mean by that is that you can do predictive analysis of where the crimes are going to happen and make sure that there's a police officer there before it happens. Lots of ideas about that. You can think about it on a payday. If you have a police officer at an ATM, there's less crime. Some other things that we need to think about are jobs. We need to have jobs for those folks that are committing the crimes. We need to have an education system that goes into and teaches the students what they need to do to get into those jobs. And we also need some youth programs so that we have something for those young folks to do after school and on the weekends so that they're not leading their lives towards crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, how can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate?
City council needs to understand that this last budget cycle, we took over 15, between 15 and 25 positions away from the police department. Depends on who you talk to about the number count. We took over $1 million out of their budget. It's been said that our city spends more general fund money on police department than any other city in the county. Well, we're the biggest city in the county, of course. That makes sense, but when you look at it on a per capita basis, Oxnard is near the bottom of the list of the amount of money per person that it spends on public safety. We're almost last out of all the communities here. We need to focus on public safety. We need to focus on public safety. We need to get them back to being able to do community-oriented policing and be in touch with our community, talk to the neighborhoods. It's hard to do that when they're running call to call to call. It is not unusual for there to be twenty-five calls pending. I know this. I called in, and they say you're twenty-fifth on the list. I told them, forget it, I'll figure it out another way. We need to focus on that and be in communication with our city and reinvigorate community-oriented policing.
Thank you. Mr. Patrice, helping the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate?
I believe that the biggest motivator is to put the police department, because they are supposedly the experts in fighting crime. I would have the city council ask the police chief to bring to us a plan, how you're going to go about in reducing the crime rate. We're going to give the police chief one year to reduce the crime rate. If at that year, the crime rate has not been reduced, we're going to cut their budget. We're going to cut it further, and you're going to have to do more with less. We're going to cut it by one-third, and if that doesn't work, we're going to give you another year. And if that doesn't work, we're going to fire the police chief and replace him with another one that is more competent. Apparently, if the crime rate is not going down, he's not executing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, helping the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate?
I think we have to realize that we can't be what's called a full-service city. Our city tries to do so many things that it does not focus on the basics, such as law enforcement. We need to make sure that the police department has the resources, and we need to make sure that they are not distracted by the ordinances that we adopt. Tuesday night, it looks like we just had a first reading of a new anti-smoking law. Is that really the most important thing here? I don't think so. I think we need to focus on these basic things. I think we need to beef up neighborhood watch programs. There's a lot that ordinary citizens can do to reduce the crime rate in their neighborhoods. So, basically, focus, divert resources to the police department, bolster neighborhood watch programs. That's how we solve this sort of problem.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, city council helping the Oxnard Police Department lessen the crime rate?
Yes, first of all, I believe the city police should be properly staffed. And with that, I believe there should be monies for the youth, apprenticeships, for between thirteen and twenty-four. I worked with youth for thirty years, and I've never met a bad kid with just bad decisions. And we, as a city, have got to keep kids and young adults from making those bad decisions with mentorships and apprentices, and keep them, give them options for their choices. Also, we have to work with the neighborhood councils, try to get them to get a neighborhood watch, like Mr. Starr said. I believe that'll help the police.
Thank you. Mr. Albanese, helping the Oxnard Police Department?
So, first of all, it disappoints me that really only one person up here touched upon the real issues, and it disappoints me that we don't have anybody really, on the inside is what I'm going to call it, that really understands the real issues that have to do with a lot of safety in the community. I do believe the police department needs more resources, they need more equipment, they need more personnel. At the same time, I don't think all of the equipment in the world or personnel in the world will make the difference unless we attack the real issues, which is usually at a young age at home. There's a young gal in the community that attacks the issue that is the nail on the head, which is attacking and helping parents understand the kids, having more communication, and vice versa. I think the main issue usually lies at the home at a young age. And yes, we'll support our police department with whatever they may need, but if we don't attack these issues at a young age, we're not going to get anywhere, and it seems to me that nobody understands that really in the community or in the city council around the inside. So, if we tack that, we help our police department, give them everything they need. How do you feel when you go into a nightclub or a bar or a restaurant, there's five police officers outside? Do you feel safe?
We hit your limit, thank you. Mr. Chavez, how can the city council help the Oxnard Police Department?
You know, there's many ways for us to be able to help our Oxnard Police Department, and a lot of them were already spoken on. You know, swapping out old equipment for new equipment, hiring additional personnel, and sworn officers as well as supportive staff. But, you know, in the largest city with over two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand residents, we are in the top twenty largest cities in California, with the largest young population in the county, mind you. We need more when it comes to recreations, and that's where we need to take steps as leaders on council to build relationships with local businesses, new businesses, nonprofit organizations, and community leaders to be able to bridge a gap, because the old saying, "It takes a village," and it really means, "It takes a village." We need to all come together to build a bridge, a partnership, so that we're able to help our youth, our residents, and our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. That runs through question three. We're moving to question four. We're going to start with Mr. Huber. Slide and the mic down. So, Mr. Huber, what is your plan to assist the city of Oxnard to be more business-friendly, such as streamlining the permitting process?
Thank you very much. As a small business owner, I know exactly what it takes to start a business in Oxnard. I've been walking around and talking to business owners, and I've actually been told that Oxnard is anti-business. Some of the reasons we're anti-business is because we do have a terrible permitting process. I don't think that you can throw concierge in there and solve the problem. That's more red tape. What you need to do is streamline through continuous process improvement or some other type of business savvy approach, make sure that permitting process is much easier. The other thing is that when a business applies for a permit or to open a business, the conditions that they have to be assigned are just amazing. Hundred-and-twenty, hundred-and-seventy conditions just for a small business to open. Some of them can't open for six months, losing six months' worth of revenue because there's so many conditions. We need to streamline the conditions and streamline the permits and be much more friendly to our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, your plan to assist city of Oxnard more business-friendly, such as streamlining permitting process?
I think the way we approach it right now is not working for us, and people go in, submit for a business plan or a business permit. It goes to one table, comes back, goes to another, comes back. Yesterday, I was able to sit in on a meeting that I facilitated with a new business that wants to come to Oxnard, and instead of going through the normal process, we brought all the city stakeholders to the table at the same time and had a roundtable discussion with the applicant right there and cut to the chase of bringing him into our city. We told them upfront what they were going to be expected to do. We asked them if they had any questions of us. And I don't think we're doing that on a regular basis, and that's what we need to do. We need to encourage businesses that, you know, you need to look at us as your friend, and right now, we're not being very friendly. And I think we need to work with other regulatory agencies throughout the county and throughout the state to help them be more business-friendly also. I think they've lost sight of the fact that a successful business is a successful community, and we're not doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Patrice, plan to assist the city be more business-friendly?
I believe that the city of Oxnard should either, one, establish a fact-finding committee of business people and regular citizens to study the, how to make it more effective and more efficient, how to make it more enticing for businesses to come and establish their businesses here in Oxnard. We ought to be able to use the Ventura County Economic Agency in order to work very closely with them in order to come up with ideas on how to entice businesses. My main goal is to really create good-paying jobs for the city of Oxnard, and that's going to be, that's going to be a twenty-four-hour thing with me if I am elected. We're going to create good-paying jobs. I have a plan. I have to create more than a hundred jobs every year for the forty years that I'm elected.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, business-friendly?
Permit, simplistically. Pioneer to Phoenix. It is now being used in Rancho Cudova, Oxbrook, Yellow County. What is it? The city decided to enlist architects and civil engineers, gave them the power to self-certify that their building plans were compliance with the building codes. The applicant takes their house plans in to the city, gets their permit that day. Now, we're months and months and months waiting for city bureaucracy. It just basically outsourced the permitting process. It got out of the government hands and made it possible for businesses to do tenant improvements really quickly. We can do that here. Outsource the permitting process, and you will find the process much easier. The city cannot run this at all.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, your plan to assist in becoming a more business-friendly city?
Yes, the permit process has got to be streamlined, and it's got to be business-friendly. And I believe that if we place items in the planning to make it business-friendly, you know, I'm all for, like most of the candidates have already said, whatever it takes to get a business started and make it easy for them to come to Oxnard.
Thank you. Mr. Albanese, business-friendly?
I'll start with a quick example of two local businesses, and keep this in mind. It's simply an ice cream shop. They're simply ice cream shops. They couldn't get the doors open for eighteen months. One just opened recently, and the other one is still struggling through the hoops that these other gentlemen are talking about with permitting. It's an ice cream shop. I think the mayor has implemented the one-stop shop, which is a step in the right direction. And at this moment, I don't know exactly if outsourcing is the right situation or if we just need to get into our department and really hunker down and really see what exactly is the issue here? How can we make it more efficient inside the city and try to help it progress? Because small local businesses don't have huge funding and huge backing. Eighteen months can kill them, and they could close their doors before they even open.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, on business-friendly city?
You know, many people I've spoken with, I've always told them that the city council at one point did have a great idea of creating the city center to be the one-stop shop. The problem was that there was nobody there to oversee it, to manage it, which means that it fell through the crack like many other departments or projects that the city council has ventured into. The thing that I would like to see is actually make it a one-stop shop. Have a business service manager that would oversee all businesses' relationships. Break up the city into districts so that you have your own personal district business coordinator that you get to talk to one-on-one with to provide the support that you need to ensure that your business succeeds. You know, the processing for the permits, you know, the last time that I heard, took seven months or more. And again, we're paying, we're asking businesses, new businesses, to pay two to three times more than anybody else. I believe business is time is very important, and the city needs to start treating it as such.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier, your plan to assist the city becoming more business-friendly?
Like most have already said, streamlining the processes a must. But I think the biggest thing we can do is we have to work on changing the perception that it's hard to do business in Oxnard. And I think we can do that through a series of city and chamber-sponsored business expos. And at these expos, we can introduce businesses that want to come to our city, can meet businesses that are currently here through the Chamber of Commerce. They can meet local organizations like the Downtowners that they want to set up downtown and see how things are done there. And they can, those two groups can help these new businesses navigate the hard process that currently exists at City Hall. So, those are the things I'd like to see.
Thank you. That ends that question cycle. We are in the fifth and last question before we get to the closing statements. Shifting gears a bit, we're going to start with Mr. McDonald. The question is, do you support adding lifeguards to Oxnard's beaches, and how would you pay for it if so?
I do support bringing lifeguards to Oxnard beaches. We are the last stretch of coastal access area in the County of Ventura that does not have some form of lifeguard protection. It can be expensive. Do we need to build a full program at the beginning? No, I think we need to approach it incrementally. I think we need to look at ways of staffing it, and perhaps this is something where we look to the county. And instead of having the workforce internally, see if there's a way to partner with the county and get a way of doing that that's more cost-effective. In terms of support, it's going to be a general fund asset that we pay for out of general fund. How do you get that money? You encourage people to come live here. You encourage people to come open their business here. You encourage people to work here, and when you have a workforce that is well-paid and doing well, they spend their money locally. That increases your general fund. That gives us the ability to pay for that type of program. But we have to be moderately budgeted.
Mr. Patrice, you support adding lifeguards to Oxnard beaches, and if so, how do you pay for it?
I support adding lifeguards, but I would not have the city pay for it. I would try to look for public charities, private charities who will be willing to pay the bill. And if that doesn't work, I will go ahead and take it out of the police department budget.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, lifeguards in Oxnard beaches, and how to pay for it?
I'm not sure that's the best use of the word. I think you have to look at the number of lives saved, spent here versus elsewhere. My general sense is that we're probably going to save more lives if we figure out how to get the murder rate down. And I think focusing on that, focusing on the general police services would be a better use of resources. I can be convinced otherwise. Someone can show me statistics that says for over two-hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, you save so many lives. I'm open to look at that. But my general off-the-cup answer is beef up the police to begin with, that we have today that we've lost, so that we can get better services there. Let's get the bank program up there first before we start looking at low-yielding proposals on that place.
Thank you. Mr. Villa, do you support adding lifeguards to beaches, and how would you pay for it if so?
Yes, I support lifeguards at the beach. I believe we have to be physically responsible and in healthy reserves in order to pay for it. But in the meantime, I believe we should have a partnership with the county in the meantime. But we should have been physically responsible and in healthy reserves to pay for that. But I'd like to see a partnership with the county.
Thank you. Mr. Albanese?
So, if I go with my family to the beach, and I'm the best swimmer in the world, there's still things we can't control with Mother Nature. So, obviously, we do need lifeguards on our beaches. I think there's several ways, and this is just one thing that I just thought about right now when we're sitting up here. Why can't we have large companies of beach gear, beach equipment, things like that sponsor the lifeguards? Or put money into a fund for these lifeguards in return. They can do some advertising, or they can do some different things of sort in order to pay for the lifeguards. And that's just one suggestion or idea that we can use in order to execute that and really keep our beaches secure, because I'm a good swimmer, but I've been caught in a little bit of a riptide before, and it was tough for me to get out of there. So, I would definitely want a lifeguard to be there in order to get me out of there. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, supporting lifeguards and how to pay for it?
I support it. As far as swimming, I think I can only doggy paddle. I can't swim. But I believe, you know, the Ventura County Community College District offers classes for police and for fire. I would love to see a partnership with the VCCD that will allow those students that take police courses or take firefighter courses to kind of do like a summer intern program that provides our lifeguards on our beaches. Of course, funding will have to come from the general budget or potentially look at the fire department, because this will be a group that will work with our firefighters. And I guess I have to learn how to swim if we don't get lifeguards, right? Doggy paddle's not going to work.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier, the lifeguard question, supportive? How to pay for it?
Yes, I do support it. I've got, my wife and I, we have a son, and him and his friends, they really love going to the beach and riding boogie boards. And as a parent, I'm always concerned that there's no lifeguard on duty while they're out there doing that. They have to take care of themselves. So, I definitely think we need lifeguards. I would like to see maybe half of the positions paid for through the city. And the other half, I would look to the, we have so many students, high school, colleges, so I would look to try to sponsor some type of summer hire program to staff the others.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, supporting lifeguards at beaches and how to pay for it?
Thank you. Oxnard is a tourist destination. We have beautiful beaches. And when I take my wife down on a date to the street beach, we see a lot of people in the water swimming, and they're lifeguards. We really do need to have lifeguards. But before we talk about lifeguards, we really do need to make sure our fiscal house is in order and we can figure out- order and we can figure out how to pay for those. And once we figure that out, the first thing we need to do is hire a marine safety officer that'll coordinate those lifeguards. We do have lifeguards in Waimiwi and lifeguards in Ventura. So we need to take an innovative solution or innovative approach and take a look at how we use lifeguards and how we hire them. We can use state, county, city, or maybe contract out whoever's the most efficient, uh, organization is who, who we should hire for those lifeguards. Thank you.
Thank you. That runs through our series of five questions. We're gonna do one minute each in closing statement. Switching things up, I'm gonna start at this end of the table and work our way down in the opposite of the alphabetical we started with. So Mr. Villa, we'll start with you. One minute, your closing statement, please.
Yes, thank you for having us here. Um, thirty-eight years, most of my adult life, I've been involved with the community or youth or the workplace and I volunteered. I stepped up to the plate. Now, with my leadership experience, I believe I can take another step and lead the city into the right direction. I believe that being retired for thirty-five years in the postal service, I'm gonna spend a hundred percent of my time as city council. The other candidates have full-time jobs, I am retired. I'm gonna give you a hundred percent of my time, twenty-four hours, and I'll be engaged with the public like I have been with the INCO and with the businesses. And that's what the city needs is a new positive change of engagement with businesses and the residents.
Thank you. Mr. Starr, closing statement?
Here we're filling a vacancy on the city council. And what you're gonna find is that all the candidates here are making various promises, but you really don't know how they're going to perform. In some cases, if they've already been there, you know how they perform. But for the most part, you don't know what they're gonna do. In my case, you know I'm gonna get things done sort of life. And you seem to go out there defending people, going out and getting initiative on the ballot. That's what it takes in the face of a lawsuit by the city to suffer. You know I'm gonna be your champion. You know that I'm pro-business. You know I'm gonna focus on the basics of law enforcement, infrastructure, and creating a business-friendly environment that makes it possible for all of you to do business here, to expand your businesses here, to bring more businesses into town. And that is what's gonna bring success to the city. I can help be a champion.
Thank you. Closing statement, please, Mr. Patrice?
Uh, yes. I would like to just say that if you really want change, if you really want a dynamic member of the city council who is not gonna be afraid to make decisions and be afraid of what's gonna happen to his reelection, I personally do not care if I get reelected. But let me tell you something, you give me a chance to serve four years in the city council, you're gonna see a dynamic economic, economic system in the city of Oxnard, you're gonna see changes right away. We're not gonna wait two years, we're not gonna wait one year. We're gonna, we're gonna start, we're gonna walk and start doing things that need to be done. And I'm gonna make decisions that are gonna hurt, but it's gonna be for the benefit of everybody. Two issues. One is economic development. I have a plan to create hundreds of good-paying jobs. Uh, secondly, is crime. I am really sick and tired of the city of Oxnard throwing money at the police department and the police department turning around and not doing anything. They're not doing their job. I will put, I will want the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, make sure you speak right into the mic. Your closing statement, please?
I want to thank you for being here this morning. I know all of you have busy lives and I appreciate you taking the time out of your day to come listen to us. Uh, that's very, very important to me. We on city council are here to serve what you need. That's our job. That's why we get elected. Being a city council member is not just seven or eight hours on a Tuesday night meeting and, and I will be the first one to tell you, we can be more focused, we can be more efficient, we can get business done in a time and matter. Uh, we're just having a little trouble there right now. We're a little challenged, but that will come in time. I spend probably thirty hours a week doing council work, if not more. I'm, I'm completely focused on this job of making this community a better place to live, work, and recreate. I want people to be happy here. I want them to feel safe here. I'm blessed that you've given me two terms as a councilman. I'm hoping that you will give me one more, or at least one more if I choose to go on beyond there. Uh, I have left my campaign material on your tabletops. It fully outlines what I intend to do. And if you need a beautifully anointed yard sign to complement the color of your house, you can find outside the door.
Mr. Huber, your closing statement, please?
Thank you. When I was a midshipman at the Naval Academy, I was able to walk through a set of bronze doors with a Latin inscription above it that said, "Known city, said patria." That means not for self, but for country. We knew that we were getting into something greater than ourselves. I see the same thing here as a councilman for Oxnard. I'm getting into something greater than myself. This is not about me. I have no personal agenda. My agenda is what is good for the city. My motto is known city, said Oxnard. Not for self, but for Oxnard. Oxnard can be a great, well-run city, and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work. So hopefully you vote for me. I'd be honored for your vote. I'm number five on the ballot. It's a long ballot. Also, I'd like to thank the chamber for having this forum. And I'd like to thank all of you for being educated voters and coming out. Please continue to do your research, check their websites. In fact, you have a card on your table that has my website on it. It has more information about me. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dozier, your closing statement?
Thank you again. Thank everyone for inviting us and giving us the opportunity to speak to you, a short amount of time that we have. If you wanted to find out more about me, you can go to OrlandoForOxnard.com. I am a lifelong public servant at some point in, at, you know, some point, various points in my life, from being in the military to now working as a federal employee. I've always worked to better any community that I've lived in. I'm a, I've been a budget analyst that's been responsible for hundreds of millions of dollars. I'm currently a program analyst and I bring to life projects that engineers foresee and make sure that they come in on time and on schedule and below cost. I offer my skills to the city and I hope that you consider me this November for your vote, number four on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chavez, closing statement?
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for food share, for the sponsorship. Uh, thank you for Nancy and the carts in the back. You know, many of you, this may be the first time that you're seeing me and it's no surprise. Um, this whole entire time, a lot of people ask me, what is your experience going into this? And I don't hide around the bush. I, I'm honest about it. I don't have experience. So I've been taken since February of this year, attending every city council meeting, attending every single commission meeting that I'm possibly able to get to, meeting with nonprofits, meeting with community leaders, so that I can learn what it takes to be part of this city, what it takes to serve on the city council. So that when I do, when I am fortunate enough to be on the dais, that I'm not learning the job, I would already know the job. So I don't know what number I am on the ballot, so, um, well for me.
Thank you. Final closing statement, Mr. Albinades, please?
So I'm gonna keep it really simple. I understand local business. I've owned, I've operated, I've opened, I've sold several in the city of Oxnard and elsewhere. I've assisted many local business owners in the community to also open their doors and move their business forward in an upward direction where they're actually building revenue. And I feel that's what I really can do with the city of Oxnard. I haven't put initiatives on the ballot that truly weren't the best thing possibly for the city. And I don't have the past two terms as experience with the city and haven't been able to unite the city council or the community. But what I can tell you is I don't have a plan, I have a vision. And I have something, uh, Mike Tyson once said, everybody, anybody can come in the ring with me with a perfect plan. As soon as I knock them upside the head and they fall on the floor, that plan goes off the window and goes that way and they fall on the floor and I win the fight. On the contrary, I'm like Floyd Mayweather. The first two or three rounds, he's trying to figure out his fighter, figures him out, takes him.
Ladies and gentlemen, a round of applause for our candidates. Just thank you to all of you. And I mentioned at the beginning that I thought this activity would enrich us all. I believe that's been true. I feel that. It's an honor to be up here with you. Thank you all very much. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. You really have to take this all of this and I appreciate that. We've been a lot, actually a little quicker than we had planned on, so that's great. Um, I'd like to thank you, the chair, again, for sponsoring. I'd like to thank all the candidates for dedicating some time this morning with us.
Can you make a statement on how you thought you did? I'm comfortable with how, how I answer the questions. I, I appreciate all the people being involved and, and coming forward and doing this because fresh blood is good for the organization. And, and it also allows us to hear perspectives that maybe we're not considering as those that are already in office. And that's really why we're here, is to serve the needs of the community. And this is, re-incentivizes us to do well and do what we need to do. Did you hear any new ideas from the candidates that you'd consider? Yeah, I'm sure I did, but I'm about to sit back and go through my mental notes and see what they were. But you always have to be open to new, new ideas and at least give them the, the concept of, of being reviewed and, and seeing if they're possible or not. So if you stop doing that, if you stop looking for new inventive ways, then you probably shouldn't be in this job. Right. Do you think that one minute is enough to respond to some of those rather complex questions? Oh, absolutely not. How would, how would you change the format of the debate? You know, it's hard. When you have this many candidates, if you try and split them up, then they don't get the value and you don't get the value of comparing them to each other because you lose sight of that. Uh, you also have to be mindful of people's time, their personal time is very important to them, especially individual business owners. If you don't work, you don't get paid. So, um, I don't know if there's a really good way to do this. I, I was happy with the way the process went this morning, but, you know, again, there's always room for improvement. Thank you very much. Thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Brian Patino, an ex-Navy man who I met this morning for the first time. We'd like to hear your impressions of today's session. What did you, what's your takeaways from it?
Um, I took away a lot of people that are focused on uniting and bringing a cohesive unit to Oxnard, a lot of plans for bringing business and jobs here, which is excellent. And, uh, I, I heard a couple candidates state a focus on our youth and developing youth programs to help out our community. And also, most were in unity in producing good safety tactics for, for public safety, yes. So, I mean, one thing that I, that I can take away right now is that we have several people that wanna do good things for Oxnard. And it's up to the people now to support them and their endeavors.
Let me ask you the question on the flip side. Uh, did you see any people that differentiated themselves as being especially better or not as good as the otherwise?
Uh, there was one member that couldn't focus more on productivity and more positive avenues. He was kind of putting down our police chief who has just stepped in. I believe that, uh, that we need to support the new police chief and encourage him and not put him down or make him feel that he's gonna be based on notice. Um, but there, uh, on a positive note, there was a gentleman that was adopting, uh, his former military lifestyle and wanting to incorporate that into the city's values. And I believe that's actually a very good thing because as one serving.
Talking about Mr. Dozier?
Uh, I was talking about Mr. Dozier and Mr. Huber. Both those candidates are veterans from what I can understand and what I learned today. And I definitely, as a former veteran, I wanna encourage that because the values that are instilled in a, in a veteran are good for our community and good for.
One more question. What do you think could be done to better acquaint the residents with the candidates to help make a decision?
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm so sorry.
How, how could people be better informed to make a good decision for the election to pick candidates for the council and mayor?
Well, I believe that they need to get involved with Oxnard Chamber of Commerce to get informed. And they put on a great event here to help the community become informed. I also believe that our local nonprofits and our local businesses also have a duty and responsibility to put out that information to the citizens from time to time when they come in and say hello, meet and greet, and say, hey, guys, guess what? Oxnard Chamber of Commerce put this great event. They're gonna do another one possibly, or who knows who else is next. I hear there's another, uh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Nancy Lindholm, President of the Chamber of Commerce for Oxnard.
I was pleased with the turnout. Um, I, I thought it was very interesting to hear the perspective of the candidates. I learned a lot about a few of them who I personally did not meet before. So, uh, our whole purpose of having the forum was for the business community to get to know the candidates, and I think we accomplished that.
Do you think the candidates began to differentiate themselves today?
A few of them did. Yeah, yeah.
Any comments further on that?
Uh, no.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Steve Huber, former Navy captain, head of the Naval Surface Warfare Program, owns his own consulting firm in Oxnard, productivity improvements, some of what I did when I had a real job. We'd like very much to hear your impressions of today's session.
Yes, thank you. Today was the first one. So it's coming out of the gate. This is a great forum, good questions. Um, would have liked to have a little bit more time because you really, it's hard to answer questions in one minute, but all the candidates had the same rules, so it was very fair.
How would you change it?
Um, I think it'd be two minutes for the opening and then, you know, leave it at one minute for the questions. But a little bit more time so people can get to know more about you. Uh, cause otherwise, it's just they go to see my website, but you can actually articulate. I mean, I have a one, two, and three-minute presentation.
And your website is?
Steve, the number four, Oxnard.com. That's steveforoxnard.com.
How else would you have the public become more familiar with to make a good decision about who to vote for?
Oh, yeah, thank you. We, we have a number of ways that the public, the public has to be educated because people can say things, but you really need to look at what they stand for. Check their website, check their Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, go to all the forums. And there's a lot of neighborhood candidate open houses, which is fantastic. It doesn't have to be your neighborhood for you to go to it. You can go to any other neighborhood. Cause at the Kamala neighborhood on the 26th of September at 6:00 PM, we have filled out a twenty question survey that's actually gonna be published in Citizens Journal, I understand. And so you can talk to the candidate one-on-one at that open house. On the 4th of October, the Cabrillo neighborhood will be having theirs as well. Kamala's at the St. Paul's Methodist Church on C Street. And Cabrillo is at 6:00 PM on the 4th of October at the North Oxnard United Methodist Church. So please come out.
Well, Steve's been quite a public servant. A lot of people don't know, he's also the, you're the president of the Planning Commission now?
Chairman of the Planning Commission.
The chairman of the Planning Commission as well. Served on a number of other committees in the past, too. Thank you very much and thank you for what you brought to the session.
Thank you very much. It was fun. Take care.
I'd like to introduce you to Aaron Starr. Aaron is the controller at Haas Automation, the largest manufacturing business in the region. He's also a very differentiated candidate, to say the least, for Oxnard City Council, having some very different opinions. I'd like to hear, first of all, your opinion of today's proceedings. What went on?
I thought it was well-organized. I thought the challenge was the length of time for our answers with eight candidates, each one being given a minute. Very often, we were being cut off and I had to be very mindful of the time. So it's about getting a very crisp message succinctly out there so that it resonates with people. And that's not always easy to do.
Do you think those are the right questions they asked, or there have been some that you would like to see in as well?
Um, I think it would have been entertaining if they'd asked about Measure M, but, but for some reason it chose not to.
So did you sense a, a significant differentiation of candidates presented today?
Definitely. Yeah, there was, there's definitely folks who say they wanna get things done and then there are folks that actually get things done. So.
A lot of people say that Oxnard is anti-business and other people say that you're anti-government. Any comment on that?
Uh, well, that's not mutually exclusive. But I, I guess what I would say is that very often, government gets in the way. So government is not facilitating the process. They're getting in the way of the process.
Okay. Final question. On your ballot initiative to rescind the rate increase for wastewater, do you believe the city needs more money? And what is your end game with this whole thing? Where are you going with it?
Well, and that's a really great question. The first of all, you have to get good information from the city. We're finding that even in our, in their lawsuit against me, we're doing discovery and it's very difficult to get all the data from them. So until we get all the data from them, it's hard to discern what's really needed. But I can tell you this, even the city has admitted that they can repair their facility for under $80 million. And yet, their proposal is to spend another $512 million on a brand-new sewer treatment plant. So clearly, we can do, uh, we can do with a lot less, uh, being paid by ratepayers to get the job done. We just don't know how much less.
Now, you have very strong focus on infrastructure and public safety. Another candidate, Orlando Dozier, referred to Maslow, presumably he's talking about Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Do you see some compatibility between what he's saying and what you're saying?
Oh, sure. It's just really, uh, I mean, at the end of the day, you have limited resources chasing, uh, numerous wants, more than we could possibly fulfill. And you have to focus on the basics first. If you don't get the basics done, then you really have no point focusing on everything else. We're, as a city, let me do it this way, we're not ready to self-actualize as a city if you're gonna borrow from Maslow. We need to survive first. We need to make sure that we're safe. Uh, we need to make sure that it's, that we can actually live. And right now, when you don't even make it easier for businesses to come to town, it's very hard for people to live. It's very hard to employ people. So until the basics.